Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration. Our first item is the approval of minutes of January 5th, 2005. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. And I just want to take a moment out. I think I may have missed it, but I want to welcome our new member, Daniel Muchnick.
Muchnick.
Muchnick, welcome to our committee. We'll move to the policy calendar. Because President Rob has to attend another committee meeting, we will move Hunter College's item up on the agenda. President Rob, would you come to the table? And introduce item B3, a naming resolution for Hunter College.
This item is to name a professorship in nursing, supported by the William Hearst Foundation. It is a gift of $300,000 with a commitment to make it a $500,000 gift. It was started at the time, Chancellor, before the new standard of, I think, $750,000. So, we spoke with Dean Flynn, and he had approved this. So it is a nursing chair. It's our second nursing chair, which is a very important thing for us. It's one of the biggest challenges in nursing, is recruiting faculty at the state pay level. So this is a very important part of our initiative to improve and really invest in our school of nursing.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
President Gregory Williams, would you come to the table? Good evening.
Good evening.
And would you introduce item B1 and B2, two namings at City College?
Yes, thank you very much. A couple of items here. One, to name the chosen Buttonwiser Conference Room at City College. This is for a member of the class of 1883, who actually led the first fundraiser drive at City College, is best I can determine, and actually, it was something named for him in the Finley Student Center, but that was torn down in 1986. And there, so, the conference room was named on the college once that was torn down, but it wasn't in the initial inventory when we went through that, so we wanted to do that. Secondly, we received a $10 million gift from Michael Ross for a program in Jewish Studies, and Michael and Irene Ross Chair in Hebrew and Yiddish at the City College of New York. And so I'm seeking approval for both those items.
Thank you.
I'll move it to City College, it'll be cheaper.
May I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Provost William Tremontano, Brooklyn College, would you present item 4B, please?
Good evening. Brooklyn College proposes changes in its promotion and tenure process. Starting last academic year, Acting Provost Nancy Hager convened a committee to examine the apparently cumbersome and tenuous promotion process at Brooklyn College. The current plan, which was approved through the typical Brooklyn College governance of both the Council of Administrative Policy and the Policy Council, the two governance bodies of Brooklyn College, decided after consultation to reduce the college's current six-level P&amp;T process to four levels. Primarily, this was done to achieve greater transparency, to avoid a duplication of effort, and to give departments a voice in all of, a voice in all the promotions in their particular discipline. Along with this, the college proposes to put in place four divisional promotion and tenure review committees. Each of these committees will review candidates for P&amp;T, recommended by the departments in the division, and then will forward to the college-wide P, or promotion and tenure committee. This final committee will send their recommendations to President, to the President of the college. So in essence, this takes a six-level P&amp;T process and puts it, and makes it a four-level P&amp;T process, which also involves the formation of a committee which is made up not only of the elected department chairs. So both President Kimmich and I strongly support this new P&amp;T process at Brooklyn College.
So does the Chancellor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I might, Madam Chair, I'd just like to point out that some summers ago, I had a research assistant do a chart of the promotion and tenure process throughout CUNY. And Brooklyn College is, the graph of Brooklyn College was the most Byzantine. So it's wonderful that you've done this.
I think, having had those six years at Lehman, and seeing how the Lehman process worked within the same system, well for me personally was a big plus. And I thank Acting Provost Hager from last year for starting the process. We're glad this is history now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Gregory Costa, would you come forward and introduce item B5?
The Law School wishes to make a technical amendment to its governance plan relating to the promotion and tenure process. The Law School has, unlike most of the other campuses, does not have departmental P&amp;Bs. And so there was only one P&amp;B for all these matters, and the workload in gathering all of the data was overwhelming to it. It's been our historical practice for that P&amp;B committee to delegate other tenure and promotion committees, which we believe was legitimate within our governance plan, but we don't have any specific language to point to. And so this is a technical amendment to make the governance plan track what has been the historical practice for the entire history of the Law School. It was adopted by a resolution of the faculty and is being submitted now.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Vice Pres, I mean Vice President Stuart Seuss, for Seuss.
I don't have your mouth anymore. We lost it in transit. I'd like to introduce a colleague here, is Professor Michael Saccololo, the Department of History, who is also the chairman of the Legislative Committee that made these proposals. And he has a wonderful slideshow, if you're ever interested in seeing it. But the gist is to bring our governance plan, which was written in 1972 and amended slightly in 1982, up to date with certain language changes and modifications, and also to provide greater continuity from year to year, in terms of having us move forward. Some of the languages are, we no longer have a dean of faculty, that's an ex officio, that's a member. We changed it to the provost. But I'd like, Michael, to exchange, to talk about the most important of the changes.
One of the issues we have on our college council, which is our governance body, which includes administrators, faculty members, and students, is that the seven or eight standing committees on the college council have a membership of one year apiece, although for the faculty members, who make up most of the college council membership, it's a three-year membership. There has been a lot of turnover, and there's a lot of kind of reinventing the wheel every September, as we have to reappoint members to each of the committees. The committee on committees that chooses everyone has to be completely reelected and reappointed again. The rules for how many votes for the committee on committees were always kind of understood, but never really laid out clearly. So we proposed a motion that was adopted by acclamation of our college council, to really streamline the process, and especially to lengthen the membership terms on the individual committees, so that there would be some stability and the continuity from year to year in the committee.
Sounds wonderful.
We hope so.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your work. Now, we move to the Chancellor's University Report, and I ask President Kathleen Walden to introduce item C1, Appointment of a New Vice President at Baruch College.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Mark Gibble, the candidate for Vice President for Advancement at Baruch College. Mr. Gibble brings a wealth of relevant experience to the college in major gift fundraising and organizational management, coming from New York University, where he served in a variety of progressively more responsible roles as a fundraiser and developer of fundraising programs. He has a proven track record of closing large gifts, as well as an experience with a capital campaign of over $400 million, and we're delighted to welcome him to Baruch College and present him to the committee. Mark holds a master's from NYU and a bachelor in economics from Goshen College.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Gibble.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And, Mr. Chancellor, would you?
I was just going to say, I had the pleasure of being in a meeting with Mr. Gibble today, and a very impressive fellow. And we look forward to helping the President raise some serious money for Baruch.
It'd be my pleasure to do so.
That's great. Welcome.
Well, we always like to welcome people who can raise money, so congratulations, and thank you for joining our staff.
Thank you.
President Gail Mello, would you come forward for item C2?
Thank you, Trustee Beal. It's my pleasure, and actually relief, frankly, to introduce to you a candidate for institutional advancement at LaGuardia Community College, Ramon Segre. As you can see, Ramon comes with significant amounts of fundraising experience in his Segre Associates, where he raised over $100 million at Mahari Medical College, and at Salem State College, where, very much like LaGuardia, there is a much more fledgling foundation. He also brings a lot of experience in the nonprofit world. He's done communications, he's done crisis intervention, and we were impressed with his ability to be connected to the kinds of students that make up LaGuardia, and his passion for making money, making scholarships, and advancing the institution. So he comes to us with a bachelor's degree in political science and education from the California University of Pennsylvania, and a master's in community psychology and organizational development from Penn State University.
Thank you. I think anyone who has experience in crisis intervention and fundraising belongs at CUNY.
Good combination.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries, and welcome to CUNY.
Thank you very much. Very pleased to be a part of the organization, and looking forward to the work at the Community College.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The following are information items, and there are none. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, items HCC are included in legit information purposes only, and do not require a report or a vote. Now, we move to Vice Chancellor Waters for her report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At your seat, you will find a report on ECP appointments below the level of Vice President that appear on the February agenda so far. And I must note that there may be other appointments that get entered onto the Chancellor's report or the addendum later on in the month. I would also report that there are five viol waivers for HEOs, one at the Law School, and four at Central Office, all for the lack of a BA. And there is one search waiver at City College. In the month of February, the Office of Human Resources Management gives a report on the diversity of the City University of New York. And I'd like to give a brief report. You have received a number of documents. I will go through them in a few minutes, but I wanted to begin by talking a little bit about the Office of Recruitment and Diversity that was established in 2006. The Office of Recruitment and Diversity, headed by Dean Henry Vance Davis, who is sitting in the back row, since its inception, has been quite active. And I just want to highlight some of the major activities that have taken place under the leadership of Dr. Davis. The Office has spearheaded a successful conference entitled "May Excellence Inclusive", which was held at the Graduate Center with over 350 attendees. It was quite a noteworthy conference, with a lot of positive response and responses back from the participants about how helpful it was to hear about best practices in inclusive excellence. The Office has also established an electronic database, which now has placed applicants in over 180 searches here at CUNY. And 90% of these applicants offer federally protected classes. The applicants are found through conference presentations, direct mail, and email, and through recruiting at conferences. Under the initiative of inclusive excellence, the Office has been working with the campuses to create a real plan of coordinated action that builds upon the diversity that is currently at CUNY. For the past 10 months, the campuses have been working on plans. Thirteen campuses have completed the first three phases of a five-phase process. The Office is also currently working on a faculty exchange program with HBCUs and Hispanic-serving institutions. And lastly, I just want to point out that the unit has continued to monitor progress in hiring and retention of protected classes in the workforce. And to that, I want to draw your attention to some of the documents that were given to you. Previously, as part of the agenda items, you received a packet of material on diversity at CUNY over the past three years. At your seat, you'll find a more detailed analysis for the fall of '08. It's the thick book. Tonight, I'd like to take you through the highlights of the diversity statistics. And primarily, I will be speaking from the orange and yellow charts that you received earlier. Table A shows a breakdown of the CUNY workforce between fall of '06 and '08, and Table B breaks it down into title series. So this is the chart, the charts that look like this. The first chart is a very high-level look at the workforce. The instructional staff between 2006 and 2008 increased by 1,088 individuals, for a 10.9 percentage change. On the classified staff side, fifty, there was an additional 413 employees hired, for a percentage of increase of 7.7 percent. If you drill down into those numbers, and divide them into the title groupings, for faculty, we have an additional 526 faculty hired between '06 and '08. On executive compensation plan, an additional 38 people, a 9.8 percent increase. Higher education officer series, we have an additional 511 people, or an 18.9 percent increase. And for other instructional staff titles, about 13 other individuals, for a 2 percent increase. Drilling down further, I have taken the faculty, the full-time faculty, and looked at the ethnic and gender representation between 2008 and 2006. For women, we have increased our numbers by 300, a 10.6 percent increase. For blacks, we have 61 additional faculty hired, for a 7.8 percent increase. Puerto Ricans, 19 new faculty hired, for a 12.7 percent increase. For Hispanics, other than Puerto Ricans, 36 were hired, for a 10.8 percent increase. Asian Pacific Islanders, 99 faculty were hired, for a 16.6 percent increase. On the American Indians, we actually lost three, so that was a decrease of 20 percent. We have so few American Indians here. And Italian Americans increased by 82, which was a 22.7 percent increase. I just want to point out that because the number of faculty has increased, in total, the N in this case, has increased, the percentage representation of the various groups within the faculty has pretty much remained constant. The one jump that we see, if you call it that, would be in the Asian Pacific Islanders, where they've gone from 9.5 percent of the faculty to 10.2 percent. Blacks actually decreased by 1/10 of 1 percent, again because of the N, not because we've not hired them. On the next page, the same kind of breakdown is done for the executive compensation plan. We've hired 26 females, three blacks, two Puerto Ricans, two Hispanics, four Asians, and 14 Italians. Decreases in percentage representation are found in blacks and in Hispanics, but again, the numbers are, the percentages are slight, and the N is greater. Higher education officer series, we've hired 341 more women, 144 blacks, 65 Puerto Ricans, 106 Hispanics, 39 Asians, two American Indians, and 41 Italian Americans. And again, the percentage representation's pretty much stayed very constant between 2006 and 2008. And the other instructional staff is the one area where you'll see some decreases. This is, these are titles that we don't traditionally do a lot of hiring in, registrar, research associate, CLTs. You do see here a jump, if you want to call it that, of 18 individuals of Asian descent, primarily in the CLT and research categories. So, you know, what does all of this mean, basically? Compared to national faculty representation, now, the latest statistics we're able to get are from 2005, so taking that into account, minority representation for faculty in the nation is about 16.3 percent, compared to CUNY's 30.8 percent. Women nationally are 40.6 percent, compared to CUNY's 46.2. Blacks nationwide, 5.2 percent, compared to CUNY's 12.4 percent. Hispanics, 3.4 percent, compared to 7.9 percent at CUNY. Asians, 7.2 percent nationally, compared to 10.2 percent at CUNY. And American Indians throughout the nation are slightly higher than what we see here at CUNY, 0.5 percent as opposed to 0.2 percent. Now, I must point out that while our numbers are certainly good, it's important to see how the diversity that we have is distributed among the campuses. 16 percent of the black faculty, for instance, are at Mega Evers. 10 percent are at BMCC. 7.7 percent are at Bronx Community College. Far fewer are at the graduate school, 1.1 percent. Staten Island, 1.3 percent. Queensborough, 2.7 percent. Hostos, 2.6 percent. What I'm trying to show is that while our numbers overall are quite impressive, there are, there's certainly a disparity in the way that the protected classes are distributed amongst the campuses. And so certain campuses have to work in certain areas, and vice versa. Among Puerto Rican faculty, 16 percent are at Hostos, 16 percent are at Hunter, 9 percent are at Lehman and Bronx Community College. Queensborough has none. The graduate school and Mega Evers have 0.6 percent of the Puerto Rican faculty in the university. CSI and the Law School, 1.2 percent. Among Hispanic faculty, Hunter's at 11.4 percent, City at 9 percent, BMCC at 9 percent, Lehman at 8.9. Mega Evers at 1.4, Graduate School at 1.9, York at 3.0. And among Asian faculty, the majority are found at Baruch, 11.8 percent. At City, at 11 percent. At Queens, at 10.4 percent. The other end of the spectrum, Hostos is 2 percent, Bronx Community, 2.2, Mega Evers, And among the Italian faculty, Hunter has 10.4 percent, Queensborough, 10 percent, New York City Tech, 8 percent. The graduate school, Mega Evers, both at 0.5 percent, Hostos at 2.3 percent. For a different view of the diversity distribution by title groups, I draw your attention to Tables 8, 9, and 10 at the back of the three-year comparison report, which you got earlier. And that just lists the campuses in the order by which they have minority representation, and it's done by title series. So you'll see a table for faculty. It looks like this. It has a blue line across the middle of it. There's a table for faculty, a table for higher education officers, and a table for the ECP. It has a different view, but again, showing the diversity of our faculty and others, but how it's distributed amongst the campuses. So that's my report on where we are with diversity. I'm open to questions, if there are any.
First of all, I think it's a very good report, in terms of showing the numbers and the progress. And so, it looks like we're making good progress in a number of areas. What would, it would be interesting to hear, is in the areas where the distribution is disparate, more disparate, disparate, what are the plans to increase that?
One of the things that we do with our affirmative action plans is that we identify the areas where there is underutilization. And now I'm getting a little technical. Underutilization is when you compare who you have in your workforce with the labor market that's out there. So when we do, when each campus prepares its affirmative action plan, they actually identify the areas where there's underutilization, and then they say what kind of plans they have to address that. In most cases, if they're not hiring, they can't address it clearly. But in cases where there are searches that are to go on in that area, they will talk about increased outreach, working with Dean Davis's office to, you know, tap into the databank, and to try and see if they can really pull on others to draw into the search process. We do have those plans, if you want to, you know, see them, I can certainly pull them together for you.
Do you feel confident that, based on the plans that you see, that progress will be made in the areas where there's underutilization?
I think to the extent that we can make progress, we will. One of the things that's interesting, of course, is that as the faculty grows, a lot of times, just the way the statistics fall, as you increase the number of people in a department, even if you hire, let's say, in an area where you're underutilized, let's say, in the area of women, you may still end up being underutilized, just because of the statistical calculation. So I think it has to be taken as a whole, and you have to look at what hires have actually taken place in a particular department to see, to judge whether or not there's intent to really do the right thing, and it just is a matter of the way the calculations fall, that it doesn't look like they've made progress. On the other hand, if they've had six searches in a particular department, and none of them addressed the underutilization, you do have to ask the question as to what intent and what special efforts have been made. There are affirmative action officers on, you know, each campus, whose responsibility is to really monitor this and to, you know, hold the departments accountable at times when there doesn't seem to be real effort being made.
I'll just jump in. We have, relative to many higher education institutions in the United States in age of faculty, if you look at the distribution on the basis of age, we have a lot of mass in the upper tails of that distribution. I don't remember the numbers exactly, but we have a fairly large group of people whose ages are above 55 to 60. And I have been saying for some time that soon, we're going to see many of those folks leave this university. In fact, we're going to see many across the United States, because so many of them were credentialed in the mid to late 60s, and there's going to be a highly contentious auction for the very best talent in the United States in a few years. I thought it would hit already, but with the implosion in the financial markets, I think a number of people are pulling back and deciding to stay in place for another few years until their financial profile improves. Having said that, we are going to be challenged, but great opportunities for us to deal with your specific question. And each year, and I think I have mentioned this several times to the board, I sit with each of the presidents going over their performance management programs. And a very important component of that analysis is their efforts to be mindful and work towards creating a diversified workforce. That will become much more prominent over the next couple of years, when we have an opportunity, if we have the resources, to really be hiring a lot. And I think that's where we really should be directing our efforts to ensure that the underutilization areas, both on campus and across race and ethnicity, are paid very close attention to, which we will.
I just wanted to ask a question. You mentioned that a number, the success in placing candidates in searches. How successful have those candidates been, and I guess, Dean, in actually getting positions that have, what's the hit ratio, as we would call it, of those who have been placed in searches versus being placed in searches? Do you want to answer that, Henry?
It's difficult to say. We haven't been able to actually get the kind of data that we'd like to get to track. I'm hoping that we'll be able to speak more.
Talk a little louder, please.
I'm hoping that we'll be able to speak more intelligently about that.
Yeah, I would, and I'm absolutely positive that your office is doing wonderful work. Yeah, I would, and I'm absolutely positive that your office is doing wonderful work, but in this moment, this environment of data and accountability, it would seem to me, are we getting our bang for our buck? It's another thing to present and to spend a lot of time, energy, and resources on bringing them here. But if we're not having any more hits than we had before we were bringing them here, I think that that would be very critical information for all of us to know.
Anecdotally, I would, I would say that we probably do well in identifying people to be interviewed, less well in closing the deal and getting people employed at the college. And it's mixed. Some campuses do better than others. Overall, the numbers that you've seen have grown. And in many areas, they've grown rather impressively, but I think it's still a work in progress.
And I just say that because we've seen this report before, and when I went back and looked at the report, it appeared to me that the campuses that had had success previously continue to have success, and the campuses that had not had success continue to not have success. And when we, reaching back to my old days, I remember, and I know the chancellor is very engaged in talking to the presidents, and we had different discussions at different campuses about how different presidents are engaged. But just from what I can see from the individual campus results, the trend, while the overall number continues to grow, the trend at those individual campuses seems to be pretty consistent in terms of who's growing and who isn't growing. So it would be interesting just to have that data on as a result of the energies that we spend in doing the searches, which campuses are benefiting from those initiatives and which ones are not.
I know that the last time we had a presentation on this information, we had the same conversation, you know, regarding the fact that there are probably reasons why some of the deals are not closed. And what we stated at that time was that we were going to try to find out the reasons why that's the case and take more proactive efforts, you know, to ensure that we could do some things to close the deal. These things do not progress unless there is significant attention. The attention coming from the chancellor is excellent, you know, because it provides the wherewithal and it puts the impetus behind individuals to understand that it's an important priority. What also has to happen on the micro level when we get into the details is that we need individuals to come up with some proactive ways to assist and help each of the campuses so that way they can expedite their efforts. And it would be good to see us move in that direction. In fact, if we would talk about where we really need attention, then we should look at the areas where there is underutilization and come up with more proactive plans to assist and help people. You know, it's better and more effective for us to work with them in that area as opposed to waiting after the fact and beating people over the head because they haven't made the numbers. I would rather see us help people in the beginning. And there are best practices out there in, throughout other universities and other organizations that tell us how to do this. So we're not inventing the tabula rasa. What we're doing is that we're really following up on best efforts. And I am aware that there are a lot of best efforts that have been made. I'm not chastising the chancellor, you know, for that, but the only thing I'm saying is that it would be good for us, you know, to not have this conversation again where we say we're not sure about all of the things. We ought to, and come up with some ways to help people to close those deals.
One of the things that we have done, we have set aside additional dollars that presidents can tap into to help with recruitment, and we have actually investigated ways of providing assistance, relocation assistance, housing assistance. We've looked at a panoply of things that could be offered if a president is in a position where they are trying to recruit someone and they really feel that some of these items would be, would help to sweeten the pot. So we really have been looking at a number of those things, and some presidents have actually approached us about, you know, how they would like to be able to do something different for a particular recruit. And so we are having those conversations. It has escalated from where it was last year. It's certainly active, engaging conversations.
I would just like to join Vice Chairman Berry in complimenting you on the report. I think it was a great report. I just have one question, and that is, what's the rationale of taking one group of white Europeans, Italian Americans, and sticking them in the report for the purposes of statistics? I mean, as you know...
Would the general counsel like to answer that question?
We are the only entity anywhere where Italian Americans are a protected group, and it's a result of a lawsuit that goes back that Rick Schaefer could enlighten you a little bit.
It's probably not the forum to be enlightened, but as an Italian American, I must say, I was, I was a little taken aback when I saw that. It's not, I mean, seriously, lots of ethnic groups have historically been discriminated against, and not the least of which certainly are European Jews and others. But there's no federal or state reason to do that, and I was just curious where it came from.
We were mandated to do that, so.
Someday we'll get out of that consent decree, but not in your lifetime.
Okay. I assume then my children should appreciate it. They should present an opportunity to become statistically significant.
You're right.
I'd also like to congratulate you on your thoroughness in collecting the data, and it's exceedingly useful for a lot of people. I have some questions, which I know you can't answer, but I just should ask them rhetorically. The full-time faculty, of course, includes substitutes. And do you have a feel for if the, if the numbers are different for the substitutes who are self-terminating in their employment compared to the tenure-track faculty?
The percentages don't vary that much. If anything, there's probably more protected class members in the substitute ranks. Actually, the larger book that you received today has a breakdown even, even further than the one that you've gotten earlier, that will, that actually breaks out the substitutes. So you have the data there that you can look at.
Very good. I'll look at that. The second part of the question was, of course, the part-time faculty, how, do you have any feel for how that looks?
You know, we don't really do an analysis of the part-time faculty, and that's a very good point. I will do an analysis, and I will share that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good one.
Are there any other questions?
No, again, really just to applaud the staff, you know, the chancellor and the staff, Davis for the work. I mean, it is good work, and the fact that you give us the information enables us to really observe it and delve even deeper. We're, you know, it makes us even more hungry, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
That's it for me.
That's it for us. Mr. Chancellor, would you, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
It's just been a long day.
There being no other business, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and then questions closed. We are closed.
We are closed.